Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the City of Farmers Branch Regular City Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, September 21st, 2021. The time is 6:01 PM, and we will call to order tonight's meeting. We will begin, as always, with our invocation and pledge of allegiance. If you all please stand. Dear Lord, we ask for your blessing this evening as we gather to serve our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need, and help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us, and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as the lives of those we will encounter afterward. In Jesus's name, amen. Now, the pledges will be led by Councilmember Driscoll.
Yes, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas pledge?
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Tonight's ceremonial items will be led by Councilmember Retana.
Thank you, Mayor Di, for allowing me to present this very important proclamation here this evening. As many of you know, we are right in the middle of National Hispanic Heritage Month. And so, with that, in support, with the support of our council, I would like to read a proclamation to honor not just Hispanic Heritage Month, but also a new event that the city is partnering with a number of community leaders on called Viva Farmers Branch. And it reads as follows. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the accomplishments of Hispanic Americans who have enriched our culture and society, and helped make America into the incredible country it is today. And whereas Hispanic American men and women embody the American values of devotion to faith and family, hard work, patriotism, through their countless contributions as leaders, innovators, entrepreneurs, and members of our armed forces. And whereas Hispanics have enhanced and shaped our natural character with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their communities, while adding their own distinct and dynamic perspectives to the story of our country. Whereas September 15th through October 15th is recognized as National Hispanic Heritage Month, which is a time to honor the invaluable ways Hispanics contribute to our common goals, celebrate their diverse cultures, and to work towards a stronger, more inclusive, and more prosperous society for all. And whereas on September 25th, the City of Farmers Branch will host Viva Farmers Branch, the city's inaugural Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. And whereas the Farmers Branch community will come together during this inaugural event to embrace and celebrate the diversity of our city, and learn about the Hispanic culture through music, dance, and other presentations. And whereas this month's theme Esperanza, a celebration of Hispanic heritage and hope, invites us to celebrate Hispanic heritage, and to reflect on how great our tomorrow can be if we hold on to our resilience and hope. And whereas Hispanic Americans represent a significant and the fastest-growing demographic of the City of Farmers Branch, we honor the invaluable ways they contribute to our great city. Now therefore, I am Mayor Protem Retana, on behalf of our mayor, Robert C. Di, mayor of the City of Farmers Branch, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2021, as National Hispanic Heritage Month. And I did want to say a few words before I bring up some of our guests here today that will be accepting the proclamation. You know, 15, I grew up here in Farmers Branch, and I will say 15 years ago, no one would have imagined that Farmers Branch would be hosting a celebration like this for our community. Farmers Branch is now a majority minority, and having this inaugural event in our city symbolizes the importance of embracing our diversity and our ever-growing Latino population. This Hispanic Heritage Month celebration, Viva Farmers Branch, has been something that many of our community leaders have strived for, some of whom are here today. It is truly taking a village to make this possible with the support of our council, with the support, our financial support from some of our local businesses, who are eager to engage with us, like the Farmers Branch Chamber, and Sandpack Ford, and a few others. We are able to make this happen. But I must say, we can definitely not make this happen without the amazing Parks and Rec staff, who have supported and really helped us make sure that everything is set for this celebration this weekend. I'm excited for this to be the first of many celebrations to come. We hope you can join us on Saturday, September 25th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at The Grove, as we showcase our culture through music and dance, and even with guests from our very own Vivian Field Vikings. And we celebrate the many accomplishments of our Latino community here in our stadium park. Accepting this proclamation are some of the volunteers and community leaders that are helping make this possible. So if I can get Elizabeth Villa Franca, Loretta Almansa, and Karina Ariano, as well as Grace with the Farmers Branch Chamber, to join us for a quick picture.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. First of all, I just wanted to remind everyone that today's the last day of summer, so enjoy the last day of summer. And I hope you all, like me, look forward to some cooler days and evenings, and sliding into fall. Our study session was shorter than most of them have usually been, and I'm just going to hit the highlights from some of the discussions. A good part of the entire package that we have deals with the budget for next year, and we've been working on this for several months. We just had a couple of questions in the study session, excuse me, and Deputy Mayor Protem Retana had a question about item I-4, which deals with the PID assessments out in Mercer Crossing, what those fees will be, if they will escalate, et cetera. And her questions were answered by Finance Director, Ms. Evans Jones. Councilman Merritt had some questions also, kind of more on some of the documents in the budget. There are tables, charts, et cetera, a lot of information, a lot of numbers. And he had pointed out a couple of mistakes that are being corrected. And a couple of references there, there were references in the budget, and in some of the notes, to the senior center, which is now the Branch Connection. So those will be corrected. He also pointed out several other places where in the proposed municipal code, there were some other tables and information about the budget that were not easily understood by us, and certainly not by laymen. And so he had some suggestions there for Finance Director Evans Jones to try to kind of streamline those. That's going to be reviewed, and hopefully make it a lot more readable and understandable for all of us. And that will go into the municipal code. He also had questions then that were answered about item I-3, which deals with the gas flare, and the item that we were purchasing some equipment for the landfill, the Camelot landfill. Councilmember Retana also had questions then about the fees on nonprofits, nonprofit organizations that are using and renting rooms at the Mansky Library. They get, the nonprofits, as I understand it, can have, once per quarter, a free room rental at the library. Then we went on to future agenda items, and there, Mayor Di liked to have a study and discussion about improving and increasing the road diet in Farmers Branch along some of our main thoroughfares to improve them, make them more aesthetically pleasing, and including landscaping and things like that. Then Councilmember Retana also would like to have a discussion about the homelessness, the homeless people that live on our borders of the city, particularly, well, along I-35 and also 635. And we had a little bit more discussion on that. And she proposed that we have a focus group, working with some of the mental health professionals that are doing some other work for us on the homeless issues, to see how we can help those people and get them some of the services that they need. Then Councilman Williams also spoke to this issue, and endorsed it, and recommends working in that regard. And I think all of us shared that view. Then lastly, Councilman Lynn also was talking about the homeless encampment or issues in the former, or in the TexDOT property on the north side of 635 between, what is it, Webb Chapel and Josie. To also include that in our discussions. And that, Mayor, is a report from the study session.
Thank you, Councilmember Driscoll. Next is the City Manager's Report on Items of Community Interest. Mr. Cox.
Thank you, Mayor. More than 60,000 Texans have now died due to COVID-19. The vast majority of those who have died are seniors. Our city's health officials remind everyone 12 and over to get vaccinated. For more details, go to DallasCounty.org/covid-19. Come join a fiesta on September 25th at Mustang Station. Viva Farmers Branch will celebrate Hispanic and Latin heritage this weekend from 6:00 to 9:00 PM in The Grove. The free event will feature live mariachis, dance performances, and kids' activities. For more information, visit FBSpecialEvents.com. Our newest citizen survey is now underway. It opens to all residents in September. It's much shorter than previous versions, and will solicit feedback on quality of life and city services. Please participate at FarmersBranchTX.gov. September is National Preparedness Month. This week, the emphasis is on teaching youth about preparedness. Our emergency management team has free starter disaster kits available Monday through Friday at the Fire Administration Building on Hudson Drive. Blood donors save lives. Join the American Red Cross at a blood drive in the Farmers Branch Community Recreation Center from September 28th, from 9:00 AM to noon. Reserve your spot at redcrossblood.org. We're celebrating 12 years of blooming bluegrass this year. The Fall Festival will once again bring A-list bluegrass performers to our historical park October 15th and 16th. Enter online to win a VIP package at bloomingbluegrass.com. Join your Farmers Branch neighbors in presenting a united front against crime during our city's National Night Out on Monday, October 11th. If you're planning a National Night Out party, call the Police Department at 972-919-9304 to register the gathering. An elder abuse awareness information seminar will be held Wednesday, October 13th, from 6:00 until 7:30 PM at the Branch Connection. That particular information seminar will be presented by the Dallas County District Attorney's Office, in association with the Farmers Branch Police Department, and the FBI Dallas Citizens Academy Alumni Association. And finally, you can sign up for e-news at FarmersBranchTX.gov to have current city news and information delivered directly to your email inbox regularly. And with that, Mayor, that's the City Manager's Report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Next is citizen comments. There is a three-minute time limit for each citizen to speak. Anyone wishing to speak shall be courteous and cordial. No disparaging or inflammatory remarks directed at any member of the City Council or city staff will be allowed. We have three people signed up to speak tonight. First is James Egan. Name an address, please.
James Egan, 3332 Brookhaven Club Drive. I came here tonight because I have been trying for some time now to have a particular property that's adjacent to my property, declared as in violation of one of the city ordinances. That ordinance is Chapter 94, Zoning 2.4B, and it reads, "Use of a residential property for non-residential purposes is unlawful." Now, they have sent out a couple of inspectors to look at this property, and I'm going to read what the two pieces of information they sent back to me. For planning and zoning, this property is zone R2. As so-and-so mentions, home occupations are allowed here. There are, however, some restrictions. In this case, the concern is using the house for storage. Since no one appears to currently be living there, no home occupation is allowed. If they are using this house as a storage facility for commercial business, they would be in violation of these zoning restrictions. Second correspondence. I was able to stop by the property today and speak with the owner. He allowed me on the property, and showed me the inside of the house. The materials and equipment I saw there, and he goes on, but I just want to emphasize, the materials and equipment I saw there. He didn't see any beds, or any TVs, or furniture of any kind. He just saw equipment. And he says, "I also made it clear to him that the property cannot be used for commercial storage." Now, I would have thought that coming from their own inspectors, that would have been enough to declare that property in violation of that ordinance that I mentioned. So, to carry this on, here's another correspondence from the code enforcement. "To answer some of your questions which you posed previously, no, we cannot lock someone out of their own home. No, we cannot get a court order to force someone to move away, even if they are breaking the law." So, let me just read something here from...
Sir, I'll give you 30 more seconds.
Oh, Lord. Okay. "An ordinance is a law passed by a municipal government. Local governments have the ability to enforce their ordinance, using their ordinances through any or all of these several civil measures, including civil penalties, court orders directing offenders to comply with particular ordinances." Is that it?
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Hayden Austin.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Hayden Austin, and I reside at 1835 Parker Road, Carrollton, Texas. The reason for my public comment tonight is I would like to officially introduce myself to the City Council and the City of Farmers Branch as the newly-appointed President of the Metrocrest Chamber of Commerce. I really appreciate your time tonight, and I look forward to serving the City of Farmers Branch. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Grace Spees.
Good evening, Mayor Di, members of the council. Grace Spees with the Farmers Branch Chamber of Commerce, 1800 Valley View Lane, Suite 260, Farmers Branch 75234. We're just here to give you a quick update on the chamber. The events list is passing along. You all may have noticed a recent inundation of your email inboxes of ribbon cuttings. Many businesses have obviously put them off for the last year and a half, so we're playing catch-up. We've even discovered one of our own local favorites, Maggie Escobar with Neuvalo and Mex-Mex, never got to cut a ribbon in the 25, actually 27 years that she's been in business. So, we have as many of them as possible listed out for you. I do want to make a note, the Shops of Mustang Station ribbon cutting was scheduled for next Saturday, October 2nd. They are wanting to break those up into some smaller chunks, so be on the lookout. I'll send you guys updated information as soon as I finalize that. I know they're wanting to make sure the mayor is able to be present, as well as the economic development team. So, we'll bring that to you. But in the meantime, we do have, and it's not on the list, but Cedar Creek Brew House is going to go ahead and do their ribbon cutting. That will be in tandem with the Chili Cook-Off coming on Sunday, October 17th. So, again, I'm going to send that out updated again, but just want to make sure you guys were in the know of what's going on. Also, I want to give you a quick update on our Workforce Success Boot Camp. Now that we're six months out, we're looking to schedule a follow-up with the students. We found about five or six of them did get placed here with local businesses, including our own Raymond Flores. And so, we look forward to continuing to working with those students, and building the program out for next year as well. Please, if I haven't met with some of you all, I would like to grab lunch or coffee, at least get a refresher, get your input on how the chamber can continue to serve this city. So, thank you for your time this evening. Appreciate you all.
Awesome. Thank you. Next is our consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
May I move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I have a motion by Councilmember Retana. I have a second by Councilmember Merritt. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is our public hearings. J1. Conduct a public hearing and consider adopting Ordinance Number 3700 for a specific use permit and associated detailed site plan for a restaurant with drive-through service on an approximate 4.84-acre property located at 13005 Josie Lane, and take appropriate action. Ms. Sin.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Shuupu Sen, Planning Department. The property for the specific use permit tonight is located at the southwest corner of Josie and Valley View. On the map or on the aerial image, the subject property, which is about 4.8-acre platted lot, is shaded in green, light green. But the restaurant is going in this yellow outlined squared property, which is about .5 acres. They are going to be under a ground lease agreement with the property owner of the platted lot. So, the application is for a specific use permit for a restaurant with drive-through service only. So, there is no dining option in this restaurant. The property is zone PD-8 with a base zoning of Local Retail 1, which requires approval of a SUP for a drive-through-only restaurant. The plan is to demolish the existing Bacon Bank building and construct the 730-square-foot restaurant building. This is their detailed site plan and the proposed landscape plan. As you can see, that's the small restaurant building. Their access is going to be from the existing drive on Josie Lane. There is no onsite kitchen. They're proposing 22-car queuing space. Also, reviewing their detailed site plan, staff has reviewed the overall site plan as well for the bigger 4.8-acre platted lot. So, the overall property is also in compliance with parking and landscaping requirements. For this 0.57-acre lot, they are proposing certain improvements. For example, they're proposing to add this dumpster with the required screening, masonry screening wall, as well as the landscaping around dumpster. They are proposing to add about 29.6% landscaping on this portion of the land. Seven of the existing trees will be preserved onsite, the trees that are shown in light gray shading or lighter shading, and the darker trees are the proposed new trees, six cedar oaks and two shumard oaks. They're also proposing a solid row of shrubs along this area facing Josie Lane that would cover the undercarriage of the drive-through lane. Otherwise, it would be visible from Josie. In terms of operations and why no onsite kitchen, this is a salad-and-go restaurant is a very unique concept. They started in Arizona. They have several locations in the state of Arizona. They're making their move in North Texas area, and they have other locations already open in the neighboring communities. So, they have a central warehouse or kitchen in a different location. From there, every day, they will receive delivery of their product through small box trucks, so no big wheelers or eighteen-wheelers to be accessing the site. And that's why no onsite kitchen is required. From a comprehensive plan standpoint, this property is within the central area plan and designated as Shops at Branch Crossing District. This area is also guided by the Four Corners Vision Plan, which recommends mix of existing retail combined with new retail civic spaces and residential uses. If you have noticed in our staff report, we give a very detailed overview of what the Four Corners Vision Plan talks about in a phased redevelopment approach for this corner. So, if we follow their phasing recommendation, this is almost part of the Phase 1 redevelopment. So, this restaurant plan is consistent with the plan recommendation from that aspect. Planning and zoning commission considered this application on August 9th and recommended approval of the SUP and the detailed site plan. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is present here tonight. If you have any question for him, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sin. I'll start to my right. Councilmember Merritt, do you have any questions? Councilmember Merritt, do you have any questions?
Again, they are proposing to remove the existing building and construct a new building. And again, could we perhaps get the applicant to talk about the concept of no kitchen? I think with just a little more explanation, understand at least. I'd like to hear it from the applicant.
Is there a name and address, please?
Aaron Hawkins at 4500 Mercantile Plaza, Fort Worth. And you asked about the no kitchen concept. And yes, they do have an offsite kitchen that prepares the food and brings it in in the mornings prior to business hours. Each one of their kitchen facilities can serve up to six of their sites in the area, so.
And so the, the delivery from the ordering process would occur, the manager or the staff says we need X number of products and those products would be delivered and be available for that day's operation. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And then I understand based on conversation that was in the presentation that you have operations in Arizona already?
Salad and Go does. I am the civil engineer.
Understood.
But yes, they started in Phoenix.
And if I'll be transparent that I did review the planning and zoning meeting, they have roughly 80 locations in the Arizona.
Yeah, I believe so.
Region, if you will?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate your, your responses.
Of course.
Councilmember Lynn.
I have one question for you, and that is in regards to the demolition and the parking lot. Will you be resurfacing your section of the parking or of your section of the property that surrounds the store?
Yes. Approximately to pretty much our entire property line that you can see there, it will be new pavement.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Williams.
I don't have any questions at this time, but I am really excited about this project. We have, I've lived in that area. I'm, I'm very close by and we have been waiting patiently for something to go into the old drive-through bank and so, and I personally am really excited about the products that Charlotte is going to be offering. So I appreciate the hard work and look forward to y'all's opening.
Of course. Thank you.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no questions. I think the explanation and the material is very thorough. And as my fellow council member mentioned, we're very excited about a new restaurant coming in and wish you all the, I know you're the architect or engineer on it, but wish them all the best and success.
Thank you.
Councilmember Otana.
Thank you, Mayor. No questions. Thank you so much.
Does anyone else have any follow-up questions? Okay. Seeing none, this is a public hearing. We do not have anyone signed up to speak to this item, so with that, I will look for a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 3700.
Close the public hearing.
Oh, enclose the public hearing.
I have a motion by Councilmember Williams.
Second?
Second by Councilmember Driscoll. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is J2. Conduct a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance number 3701, amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance, including but not limited to amending Article 5.5 Beer and Wine Sales Overlay District and Article 5.6 Alcoholic Beverage On Premise Overlay District to include into both overlay districts approximately 67.6 acres, generally bounded by 635 LBJ Freeway on the north, Luna Road on the east, the Elm Fork of Trinity River on the west, and Farmers Branch Creek on the south and southeast, and take appropriate action. Ms. Sin.
Thank you, Mayor. So the subject property, this is a city-initiated zoning amendment. The subject property shown on this aerial image is shaded in light green. It's commonly known as the Peninsula Tract and about 67.6 acres land area, mostly zoned PD81, except the Omni Hotel at the corner of LBJ Service Road and Luna is zoned PD60. So the, the whole area currently has one full-service hotel, three limited-service hotels, several multifamily developments, one independent living, and some of these apartment projects have ground floor retail and personal service uses. There is another limited-service hotel already entitled, west of the current Hampton Inn that was recently opened, and of course, some remaining vacant land. So the proposed request was initiated by City Council's direction received during the joint work session on July 12th. And also, the owner-operator of the Hampton Inn, which was the latest opening hotel in that area, is willing to have retail sale of alcoholic beverages on his hotel or on premises for, for their guests. Right now, the zoning does not allow them to have on-premise consumption or sale of alcoholic beverages because PD81 zoning and our CZO requires the hotel to have a restaurant to comply or to apply for that permit and to allow sale of alcoholic beverages. Also, they are not located with any of the, the two alcohol-related overlay district that we have, which is one for the on-premise alcohol beverage consumption and the other overlay for off-premise consumption of beer and wine only. So that's why this particular Peninsula Tract is limited on how they can operate from an alcohol sales standpoint. The nearby hotels can also benefit if we decide to expand this to overlay district to the Peninsula Tract besides the Hampton Inn, and also the existing retail, as well as any future tenant, would be able to serve alcohol under the guidance of the two overlay district if it is expanded to the Peninsula Tract. So again, going back to the map, the yellow shaded area is of course the peninsula area where we are proposing to expand the two overlay district. The blue shaded area is one of the location of our existing beer and wine overlay, which is for off-premise consumption only, and again, beer and wine only, no hard liquor. The red shaded area is our existing, one of the existing on-premise alcohol consumption overlay district land, more commonly known, known as the boardwalk area. So the proposal is to expand both of these overlay district to the Peninsula Tract, the benefits to the area hotels and retail businesses, as I mentioned before, as well as to the residents because they would be able to avail these businesses. One cautionary statement is that once we relax the alcohol regulations, we cannot go back and make them more restrictive. From comprehensive plan standpoint, this area is within the West Side Plan, Oil Side Comprehensive Plan designated as the Employment District and Neighborhood District, Neighborhood Center. The request is supportive of the plan recommendation because allowing alcohol sales would benefit the existing businesses over the long term, as well as any new tenant that would be looking into the area. Allows current and future businesses multiple avenues for TABC licensing. So Planning and Zoning Commission considered this request on August 23rd and recommended approval with a 4-3 vote. That concludes my presentation. If you have any question, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you very much. Start with Councilmember Otana.
No questions.
Councilmember Driscoll.
I don't really have any questions, Mayor, as we've previewed this before. And I do think I'm in favor of it because I think it levels the playing field and gives the other people that would like to have, you know, alcohol, makes it fair and will, you know, increase competition there as well. So I'm in favor of it.
Councilmember Williams.
I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Lynn. Councilmember Merritt.
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing. We do not have anyone signed up to speak to this item, so if there is no more discussion, I would look for a motion and a motion to also close the public hearing.
Mayor, I make a motion to close the public hearing and to adopt ordinance number 3701.
I have a motion by Councilmember Williams.
Second?
Second by Councilmember Driscoll. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is J3. Conduct a public hearing to consider adopting a property tax rate of .589 and take appropriate action. Nothing? All right. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or additional discussion? Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just felt obliged to make the following comment regarding this and the upcoming items. It was originally recommended by the city manager and proposed in the first budget draft that the tax rate be lowered to, lowered by 1.9 cents, thus providing some tax relief to our residents. At the budget retreat, my fellow councilmembers decided not to reduce the tax rate but maintain it as is presently, so the city would have more funds to put for, towards streets and parks. Additionally, there's money allocated for police over hires, which I advocated for. Many residents are still recovering from the pandemic, which has devastated so many people's lives and a good portion of our economy, as you all well know. Any other time, I would have been inclined to vote against this budget, or the tax rate, I should say. But I will vote to approve it only for the added funding that is given the Police Department to hire additional officers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else have any additional comments? This is a public hearing. Again, we don't have anyone signed up to speak to this item, so unless there is any other comments, I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
I have a second by Councilmember Driscoll. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, our regular agenda items. K1. Consider adopting ordinance number 3697, amending the Farmers Branch Code of Ordinances, Appendix A Fee Schedule, related to various fees established pursuant to Chapters 18, 22, 26, 34, 50, 56, and 86, to address needed changes to rates and fees associated with the broad range of city services and take appropriate action. Mrs. Evans-Jones.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Sherrell Evans-Jones, Director of Finance with the city, and I have a question that I could only pose to you today. Do you remember the 21st night of September as we're gathered together to consider the budget and all of its splendor? So. It was, it was only appropriate. We had the day in front of us. We had to use it. I have prepared, like I'm like back into who I am and what I do. I have prepared a few short slides because we have covered a, a number of things throughout a, a number of weeks, about a 10-week process that we've gone through since we delivered the budget. And so this is not intended to be an all-inclusive look at the budget in any way, but I just wanted to share a couple of things to help with some of the items that are on the agenda. And thereafter, I have a short video that has been available on our website and, and other avenues that explains the budget at a high level. In compliance with all laws and regulations, information was provided to the Dallas Morning News regarding the 2021 tax year notice relative to our proposed property taxes. So with that information, I know y'all are probably so tired of seeing this, but it is relevant because it, each time, you get a little closer and a little closer to the date. So we're done with all of that August and July stuff. We've, we've moved forward and we're really done with the stuff on the 7th, and here we are. But we have covered a number of things, as I mentioned before, a, a lot of budgetary ground we've covered. And that does include sharing the initial draft of the budget on our Farmers Branch website. That URL is, is printed here. You are welcome, members of the public, if you have not had an opportunity to peruse and just get a little bit more familiar. This will get you most of the way there in terms of the significant things that are included in the budget. We've participated in multiple study sessions, about four of those, public hearings, a budget retreat, et cetera. And so here we are today, the public hearing that has just been completed, and the 2021, 22 budget and all of its splendor is, is what we're here to discuss. We have also seen this before, this particular slide, and I just kind of condensed it and got rid of all the strike-throughs, et cetera, because what this slide represents is, are, are the significant changes from that budget that was prepared and, and delivered to council on July 30th. So in the draft of the budget that you received initially, the funding related to ARPA was all included in one area because the budget retreat included some discussion in terms of the best ways to allocate that. Subsequent to that, that discussion, we kind of slotted everything into its appropriate funds to be able to have these items as they're listed in the revised ARPA allocation section to have those to be able to go into effect for this upcoming budget year. And you can also see some proposed spending related to ARPA that is slated for the next budget year. We also talked about the tax rate, and that is one of those items that has been previously mentioned that was initially presented and revised to maintain our existing rate. So the maintaining the existing rate provides for a number of things that includes additional funding for street projects, additional funding to complete our Parks Master or to move forward and to make great headway with our Parks Master Plan, funding for monument signs, which is kind of a offset from some other areas that we changed. So there's a footnote there. And then additional funding for economic development. This budget creates a pathway for the hire of seven police officers as well, some of those to kind of be included and considered as an over hire. So since the initial budget, these are the more significant changes to the 21, 22 budget that have been proposed. Now, Appendix A, so that's also kind of, I've, I've viewed it as like a side shoot, a splinter of the 21, 22 budget because Appendix A, just for those people who may not be familiar, it's a, a document that kind of summarizes our significant, our fees that are charged throughout a, a variety of different areas of the city. In connection with the budget, what we do is make revisions to those fee structures and we present that to you as well. So item K1 is the amendments to the Appendix A, and that is your ordinance 3697. The, I, I won't go through every single thing because there's a lot of strikes and changing the to the and a, a number of things like that, but the philosophies around some of the areas that have been changed. So you see some things within animal services that do, that, that adjusts the fee structure to stratify adoption fees for the encouragement of adopting older animals. You see within community services codifying a number of fee changes that were already approved through council with all of that Chapter 56 Code Enforcement items. And then also included within community services, fees or the philosophy behind some of those fees relates to better covering the cost associated with providing certain services. So those are kind of two things. And then another area that had some fee changes would be Parks and Recreation, and I kind of pull in Historical Park to that as well, to adjusting some of the fees to specify certain discounts for military or non-residents to start to branch, branch, to start to speak to some of the non-resident fees and having those be at a slightly higher price to offer our residents some benefits. So that's the philosophy behind many of those, but you have included in your packet all of the changes, which would include some of the strike-throughs, so you can see what is changing and different. Now I'm going to switch gears. The slide looks similar, but what we're talking about now is this year. So we've been talking about, all this time, we've been talking about 21, 22, so next year looking forward budget. This slide is about what's happened right now. So we go through a process. In, in your initial packet of the budget, we would have included an estimate for what we believed at that time, the 2021 budget was going to come, the, the, the spending would be, what we projected the revenues to be, what we projected the expenses to be. More time has passed. We can see what's happening a little bit better, and we got good news to report. So in a lot of areas, for instance, the first column talks about the revenues and some of the areas that are changing or significant, are changing from what the adopted budget was. General fund, 1.29 million more revenue than the adopted. General Fund, 1.29 million more revenue than the adopted budget planned, and the major driver of that is sales and use tax and property tax in terms of collections related to past years that come through during this current year. Our adopted budget, you may remember, on sales and use tax was a little bit more conservative because we weren't sure what the pandemic was going to do, so we have some positive outcomes there. The Enterprise Fund, so Enterprise is like water sewer, stormwater, the one that I referred to, you may remember during the budget retreat, the Taking Care of Business Funds, not the CIP funds. So, that fund in total is showing 1.21 million dollars more revenue that we anticipate than budget, and that is largely due to, because there's been no rate change over the past couple of years. So, what you're experiencing, what we're experiencing in that revenue increase has to do with an increased consumption. Economic Development Fund, this is one of those items where we talked about it in our 21-22 budget, where an item was planned for sale during this current year that we moved forward to next year. So, you see it performing, the revenue that would have been anticipated is performing behind budget because we've moved that item forward into the upcoming fiscal year. And Special Revenue Funds is 1.15 million dollars more than the adopted budget because the adopted budget, this relates to some CARES funding, where the adopted budget did not include CARES funding because it was all expended during the early part of the year. Appropriate accounting puts those funds, because some of those funds, you may remember CARES funding, some of it was spent during 1920, some of it was actually expended and the cash moved during 2021, so that's what this change is related to. Expenditures, so the darker greens. The expenditures, the main movers in terms of expenditures on our current year budget, 2021, relates to fixed assets. So, this is one of those types of funds where it's intended to be some longer-lived projects, some long-life assets that we're constructing, building, doing, buying, and we generally speaking intend for those items to be done and complete within a short amount of time, a little bit different from CIP. So, with the Fixed Asset Fund, the library renovations, a good number of those renovations are done and complete. There are some funds yet to be expended, so effectively, similar to how I've explained with the Economic Development Fund, we are basically picking those up and moving those into the 21-22 year. So, the expenditure is less on current year, and it's included in the budget that has been before you. Special Revenue Funds, these two are actually related. As you move the revenue forward, you also move the corresponding expense. So, this slide is not intended to be a blow-by-blow, every single line item. That was provided to you with your K1 item. There's a memorandum that details out all of the significant changes and significant, all of the changes, significant or not, related to the different funds. But what I wanted to provide you here was just an understanding and overview of some of the main areas that are changing and moving. We got a couple, a couple few things before us on the agenda tonight, so I just wanted to, before I conclude, summarize those items. We already had the public hearing. The item that I'm speaking to now, but I won't make any further comments unless you have questions about these other ordinances, is Appendix A, which we touched on a little bit, as well as upstairs in our study session. You have ordinance 3698 before you to approve next year and amend this year. That's what you're doing with that. Related to that is Resolution 2021-112 to ratify the property tax rate revenue increase. So, all of that is kind of related to the 2021 budget. And the ordinance 3699 is effectively accepting the certification rolls, levying and adopting the tax rate for next year. This one, I have a couple of bullet points because I do want you to pay attention to that. It requires a specific language, and it requires at least 60% in favor of this item. With that, that concludes my prepared comments. I do want to say a special thank you to my team that worked so hard. Y'all have no idea how, you know, a budget is fairly simple in theory. You estimate some revenue, you estimate some expenditures. It gets a little bit complicated when you're doing it in concert with a number of different teams and departments and trying to make sure that all of the information is distilled in a format that is meaningful to you and to the public. So, I want to say a special thanks to Suzanne Pritchard for all of her help and work on this budget and so many budgets in previous years, our Budget Manager, Suzanne Pritchard. Mark Woodward is an individual on our team who manages the CIP and keeps all of that intact, and just our entire finance team, because it's a real team effort to pull this together, to keep it moving. I want to say a thank you to the departments.
Aye, thank y'all.
Thank you so much to all of the departments for your swift responses. We tend to go, hey, quick, we need this, especially when it starts getting down to this, so I wanted to say thank you to them. And thank you, Council and Mayor, for all of your insights, for the good feedback during the budget retreat. That was tremendously helpful, and it, you know, meant a lot in terms of getting that feedback, and the feedback that you provide us during the strategic planning sessions, because all of that, I hope you felt it, work its way into the budget, because that's what this is all about. With that, before we get into questions, and unless y'all want to do questions now, I've got a video. You want video or you want questions? Which one?
Video.
Video. Okay. Let me see. I was previously coached. I have double-clicked. There it is.
On September 21st of this year, the Farmers Branch City Council, here in the council chamber, will consider our city manager's proposed budget for the next year. Now, that's the fiscal year from October of 2021 through September of 2022. And we're going to take the next few minutes just to summarize the highlights. For all the nitty-gritty details, you can find the entire document online at FarmersBranchTX.gov. Hello again, everyone. I'm Jeff Brady, the city's Director of Communications. 2020 was a drastically distinct year for many reasons. One bright spot, however, was our city's swift and aggressive response to COVID. In the financial arena, we prepared more resources than we had to spend. This, coupled with a strategic emphasis on reinvesting in our community, allows us to have a unique opportunity this year to make substantial, long-term investments in the city's personnel and infrastructure. Very few cities have this opportunity. As always, the new budget has been developed based on the city's strategic plan, which includes the guiding principles, goals, and initiatives established by our city council. It's also been designed in response to public input from the biennial citizen survey, public hearings, and other feedback platforms. One new component this year, the American Rescue Plan, which has provided emergency grants to help towns and cities all across the country recover from the pandemic. Farmers Branch will receive $5.9 million this year. In fact, the ARPA federal program has allocated almost $12 million to the city of Farmers Branch to be issued in two equal payments over two years. 5.9 million for the 2021-2022 year, and then 5.9 more million in the following year. The city will use these federal dollars to complete a variety of projects which will improve infrastructure, public safety, and our parks. It's also important to note that the 2020 census population estimate for Farmers Branch shows a substantial jump, reflecting the significant development on the city's west side. Overall, this year's budget supports the city's mission to build a vibrant, dynamic community that consistently seeks to improve the quality of life for our residents. The major projects include increased police and fire funding, increased utility replacement, increased street reconstruction funding, creek channel improvements, Phase 2 of our recreation center upgrade, plus playground and trail improvements, a renovation of our Justice Center, and a renovation of the Branch Connection. All right, let's get more specific. Broadly, we're going to break this presentation into three main categories: revenue, expenditures, and then some important dates. Okay, first, the income or revenue. At $71.4 million, anticipated general fund revenues in the new fiscal year are up 8.2% from the 2020-2021 adopted budget, or $5.38 million more. What's the source of the extra cash? Well, property values, for one thing. They continue to surge here in Texas. Farmers Branch has a tax base that's 73% commercial and 27% residential. The city's property value grew by 12%, fueled by new construction, providing a total tax base in Farmers Branch of $6.951 billion with a B. That in turn grows our property tax revenue by $3.89 million. Now, homeowners, don't panic, okay? The average residential property value here in Farmers Branch only increased by 2.4%. So, an average property valued at $263,600 with a homestead exemption would see an annual increase in property taxes with this budget of just $29.81. And the tax rate will remain the same next year at $58.9. Okay, another growing source of revenue is our sales tax category. Of course, it's slumped during the 2020 pandemic, and Farmers Branch, like the rest of Texas, is projecting a substantial rebound in the year ahead. Our sales tax should grow by $1.5 million to a total of $17.85 million. The revenue from our landfill also continues to increase, with $800,000 in additional revenue related to increased tonnage accepted into the landfill during the 2021-2022 year. It's also worth noting that, similar to last year, the city will require no increases to water or sewer fees. All right, that's the income side of the ledger. Now, let's take a look at how we're spending public dollars, some of the most important bills to pay. Anticipated expenditures are $139.1 million for the next fiscal year. Now, that's actually down 1.5% from last year. So, we're growing revenue, but we're spending less. Some of the major ticket items include the implementation of the results of a major compensation study. Now, we conduct this study every five years, and it will drive our staff merit increases for a total bump of just over $1.5 million. We're also hiring two new police officers, plus an additional five officers to prepare for planned retirements in the Police Department. We also intend to hire a fire prevention inspector and one new employee each in Animal Services, IT, Human Resources, and Finances. Why? Well, with a population surge like we're seeing, city services have to be expanded to accommodate more people. We also need to start setting aside money for the eventual closure of the Camelot landfill. Over the next 32 years, we will pay a projected $19 million, and our new budget includes a $1 million annual payment toward these costs. And again, it's remarkable that the grand total for this year's proposed budget comes in at $139,151,963, which is actually $2.1 million, or 1.5% less than what was adopted last year. This proposed budget also literally paves the way toward a pay-as-you-go, low-debt future for the city of Farmers Branch. Of course, changes could be made, which would affect the details presented in this summary video. However, if approved, this proposed budget would be scheduled to go into effect beginning October 1st of this year. And remember, if you have specific questions, you can always find us here at City Hall or online at FarmersBranchTX.gov. And please feel free to join us here in council chambers for the next city council meeting. Until then, I'm Jeff Brady for FBTV. Thanks for watching.
Are there questions or anything that I can help with?
First, I just want to say, while we might not understand the exact amount of work that you, your team, and the entire staff puts into this budget, we do appreciate it. I know it's been a long six months building up to this, but we appreciate the time, energy, and effort that all of you have done to collaborate, to build this year's budget, and to hopefully allow us to do some pretty substantial things here in the city of Farmers Branch. And so, I just want to thank you for that effort, and I look forward to probably presenting you with another Finance Excellence Award here in the coming months. So, I just want to say that that is appreciated, and thank you. With that, I would say, as Ms. Evans-Jones outlined, we have a few motions and items to go through, so with K1, does anyone have any comments or questions regarding 3697? If none, Councilmember Merritt, well, since we're taking action, I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but Councilmember Merritt, you do have a motion.
Thank you. As we discussed upstairs, I'm going to go ahead and, after discussion with Ms. Evans-Jones and staff, we're going to look at some of the fee summaries documentation at a later date, but we're going to go ahead and approve this. And so, I'm going to move to adopt ordinance number 3697 with modifications discussed in the study session, and I believe we will move this down to the city attorney.
Yes, thanks for pointing it out. We checked, and there was one reference under the senior center fees, had an incorrect reference to the rec center, and likewise, there was a reference to senior center when it should have been the rec center. That's been corrected, and the corrected ordinance is before the council tonight.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Merritt.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Otana. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. Next is K2. Consider adopting ordinance number 3698, approving and adopting the city's fiscal year 2021-22 Operating Capital Improvement Program budget and strategic plan, and amending the city's fiscal year 2020-21 Operating Capital Improvement budget, and take appropriate action. Does anyone have any questions or discussions surrounding this item? Seeing none, and seeing that we have no one signed up to speak, I will look for a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 3698.
I have a motion by Councilmember Otana.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Williams. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. K3. Consider approving Resolution Number 2021-112, ratifying the property tax revenue increase reflected in the fiscal year 2021-22 budget, and take appropriate action. Does anyone have any questions or discussion regarding this item? We don't have anyone signed up to speak, so with that, I will look for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-112.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Driscoll, a second by Councilmember Otana. Is there any more discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. Next is K4. Consider adopting ordinance number 3699, accepting the tax rate year 2021 certification of appraisal role in accordance with Section 26.04B of the State Property Tax Code, and to levy and adopt a tax rate for fiscal year 2021, tax year 2021, and take appropriate action. Is there any comments, questions for Ms. Evans-Jones or for the council?
I would just reiterate my comments from J3. I won't read them again.
Okay. Noted. Are there any other comments, questions? Again, we don't have anyone signed up to speak, so I'll look for a motion. Very specific motion.
I'll be happy to take this.
Microphone.
I'll be happy to take this, and we'll get it right tonight. We've practiced, and so, here we go. I move that the property tax be increased to the adoption of a tax rate of .589, which is effectively a 5.26% increase in the tax rate.
And ordinance 3699.
And ordinance 3699.
I have a motion by Councilmember Merritt.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Williams. Is there any more discussion? I'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Otana.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Lynn.
Aye.
Councilmember Merritt.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next is taking action as necessary as a result of the closed executive session. Councilmember Williams.
Mayor, I move that the city manager be authorized to negotiate and sign contracts s-
Such other documents are reasonable and necessary to sell to the Farmers Branch Local Government Corporation for the purpose of resale to Thomas Cusack Custom Homes LLC and/or assigned .938 plus or minus acres of the Robert J. West survey abstract number 1576, located at the southwest corner of Josie Lane in Golfing Green Drive for a sales price of not less than $200,000 with the sale of said property to be subject to a restriction agreement on the property and the buyer's adjacent property requiring construction of 41 or less town home residents.
I have a motion by Councilmember Williams.